Okay, let's go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everybody. We've got a nice little crowd here tonight. We've got a lot of things to do tonight. So, let's go ahead and stand and do the prayer and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time. Thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon Talbot County. Thank you for all the blessings you bestow on all of us here in the state of Maryland as well as our country. Father, please bless those who haven't made it to the polls today. Father, may they get there safe and sound. And may we celebrate you and the founding principles of which we are founded on, based in your name. Father, we just thank you for this council. We thank you for the decisions we have to make. And we thank the folks who entrusted us to make them. And we pray that we do a dutiful job of those responsibilities and we make them proud and we make you proud. In Jesus' most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Step.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, okay, let's start off with the agenda is before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda tonight?
No.
Counsel? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next is the minutes of April 16th. They've been before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
No.
All right, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the dispersments of May 14th. We've had a chance to look at it. Is there any deletions, corrections, or additions to the dispersment?
No.
Okay. All right, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, first thing tonight is a proclamation on Older Americans Month. So, Madam Secretary, could you read that into the minutes, please?
Proclamation, Older Americans Month, May 2024, powered by connection. Whereas, May is Older Americans Month, a time for us in Talbot County to recognize and honor the growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas, through their wealth of life experiences and wisdom, older adults guide the younger generations and communities benefit from their abundance of cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas, Talbot County recognizes the need to ensure that older Americans have the services and support necessary to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And that we can all work to improve our community for its older residents by planning programs available to older Americans that encourage independence, ensuring that older Americans in our community are aware of the services that support aging in place, and increasing access to activities supporting individual needs and preferences. Now, therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Older Americans Month in Talbot County and support this year's theme, Powered by Connection, which emphasizes the profound impact that meaningful interactions and social connections have on the well-being and health of older Americans, encourages the community to recognize the contributions our older Americans make to our community, and to join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 14th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there a motion second to go ahead and approve this proclamation and put it into the minutes? Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Charlene, you want to come on up with your group? Welcome. Good evening. Hey there, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Thank you all for welcoming us back again.
Yes, could you tell us who you are now, so everybody knows?
I'm Jenna Markie. I'm the owner of Homestead and the chairman of the Commission on Aging.
And I'm Charlene Brose. I'm the manager of Brookless Place, a Talbot County senior center.
Okay, that's great.
And we've got a number of representatives from the Talbot County Council, as, or Commission on Aging, sorry. So, we're here to, you know, thank you guys for your proclamation for Older Americans Month. The theme this month, Powered by Connection, is really about emphasizing social interaction and relationships for seniors. About 25% of seniors that live in the community report that they're isolated or lonely in some way. So, we just wanted to talk today briefly about our Senior Resource Fair that's coming up next week, May 22nd. So, it's a free event for seniors. It fits perfectly within this theme. And of course, as a rural county and with the largest percentage of seniors in the state of Maryland, it's vitally important that we connect the seniors with other people in the community, resources, events, and opportunities to further their social connections.
That sounds good. Good. Okay, Charlene, is that?
The Resource Fair is going to be at East of Volunteer Fire Department.
Oh, okay, great.
From 10:00 to 2:00 on the 22nd.
Okay, great.
Even if you're not a senior, you can still come out and visit the booths and look around and just enjoy fellowship with some of the seniors in the community.
Yeah, we're gonna have giveaways. There's screening tests, there's balance checks, A1C tests, HIV tests, blood pressure checks. So, there's lots of opportunities to connect with folks in the community, different organizations. It should be a good time. There's gonna be food catering by Jamie. And we have a lot of support from all the companies and organizations that support seniors.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Okay, council. Mr. Step?
Yep. I'm just glad to have you back again.
Yes.
Keep, please keep doing all the things that you're doing out at the Brookless Place, because it's wonderful. I would just make one ask if I could, please keep inviting us to help serve Thanksgiving.
Oh, she will. She will.
I know what's coming, but I just want to say it. Please do.
I apologize because I was not there the last time, but I did have a doctor's appointment. But I understand some people showed up.
Yes, yes.
And you all did a wonderful job. Thank you.
I just, my one question, how come Chuck's got his own apron with his name on it?
Because he's been around for a while. I will promise, next time, I'll have new aprons for all of you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Just echo the thanks and for all that you're doing to deliver effective programming to, and help our seniors age in place.
Yep.
You stole my thunder, because I was gonna talk about you again.
Thank you all you do for us, Lynn. We appreciate your advice and counsel and attendance at our meetings.
It's just wonderful. And I hope that we get enough publicity out about it and people take advantage of what we have to offer at that festival, as I'll call it. So, thank you for all you do.
I echo what my colleague said. But what time is the fair again?
Yeah, so the Senior Resource Fair, it's May 22nd. It's 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's at the Easton Volunteer Fire Department. You can come anytime in that window, of course, and free to attend, free parking, you know, good access.
Well, thank you for all that you do. Having an 87-year-old mother-in-law who now has just been sent to Salisbury for rehab, it is important to make sure we ensure that our seniors, you know, age at home. Because the last thing she wants to do, or we want to do, is put her in a nursing home. So, hopefully, she will get through her rehab and be able to go back into her home. But thank you, and we really do appreciate all the work that you do for our seniors in Talbot County.
Awesome. Well, thank you. We appreciate all your guys' support, obviously, with programs and budget. It's appreciated. And we'd love to see you guys all there next week.
Okay, come on up. We've got something for you.
All right.
Decide to have the youngest council member.
Yes, I will not reveal my age. I was told by a gentleman in the store last week I look like I'm 30.
Yeah, you guys, one of you guys wants to speak to this side there? There we go. Oh, it's actually very nice, guys. All right, one, two, three. All right, okay. And one, two, three. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Ah, thank you, thank you.
Okay, that was great. Okay, the next proclamation is Stroke Smart, Talbot County. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Proclamation, Smoke Smart, Stroke Smart, Talbot County.
I'm glad I did that.
Whereas, stroke is the leading cause of long-term disability, putting a tremendous financial burden on individuals, families, and society, with one in six people having a stroke in their lifetime, thereby affecting 80% of families. And whereas, while there are life-saving treatments that must be administered within three to four and a half hours once symptoms begin to, in order to reverse or minimize the damage of a stroke, only a very small percentage of patients get to the hospital within the treatment window because the majority of people do not know how to spot a stroke or the importance of immediately calling 911. And whereas, to help educate the community about the signs of stroke, Talbot County public and private schools are encouraged to make Stroke Smart, Spot a Stroke, Stop a Stroke, Save a Life, part of their training for all students, staff, and families. And whereas, Talbot County agencies focused on health and safety are urged to participate in improving stroke literacy by educating employees, volunteers, and associated communities. And whereas, the goal of Stroke Smart is to educate everyone in Talbot County about recognizing the signs of a stroke and the importance of immediately calling 911 for assistance. And to encourage businesses, civic organizations, senior communities, faith-based organizations, and residents to participate in and contribute to the Stroke Smart, Spot a Stroke, Stop a Stroke, Save a Life campaign through active citizenship efforts so that Talbot County may serve as a model for other communities throughout the nation. Now, therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim Talbot County as Stroke Smart Talbot County in full support of Spot a Stroke, Stop a Stroke, Save a Life. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 14th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion second. Yep, we got a motion second to put it in the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, is Dr. Singh? Come on up, please. Okay.
All right, can I go ahead and get started?
Yeah, sure.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sukdeh Singh. I'm the medical director of the Primary Stroke Center at the Shore Regional Health University of Maryland. I'd like to start by thanking the Talbot County Council for the esteemed proclamation during the month of May, which is actually Stroke Awareness Month. It's an honor for Talbot County to become the first Stroke Smart County on the eastern shore. In 2022, Governor Hogan declared Maryland to be a Stroke Smart State, and we are excited to continue this work. Stroke is a leading cause of death and disability in the United States. In 2023, the Primary Stroke Center at the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health treated over 400 strokes. Everyone here has known at least one family member, a friend, or a neighbor that has in some way been affected by a stroke. Becoming a Stroke Smart County means we, as a county, have made efforts to teach our community how to recognize a stroke and what to do about it. Fast recognition and treatment of a stroke is imperative for saving the brain and decreasing long-term disability. With this Stroke Smart County proclamation, we are demonstrating our continued commitment to educate the community about the risk factors of stroke, how to recognize a stroke, what to do if someone is experiencing a stroke. We are also providing education about recovery of stroke and how to move forward afterwards and how to prevent future events. Our plan is to work and implement stroke education into school curriculums and disseminate information among nursing homes, community centers, churches, and other places where people gather and get information. Again, I'd like to thank you all at the Talbot County Council for this proclamation and platform. I'd like to thank our stroke team and the members of our stroke committee at the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health for their hard work and continued education to health and education of our community. It's with their efforts that we are able to provide quality treatment, education, and support to our patients, and we're able to serve our community. And with that, I'd like to introduce our stroke coordinator, Nicole Leonard, for a few words as well.
Good evening. I also would like to thank Talbot County Council for inviting us here tonight and for the support of this proclamation. As Dr. Sukdeh Singh said, stroke is a disease that can be very devastating. And it's, our goal is always prevention first, but if someone does develop these symptoms, we want to make sure that they're able to recognize them right away and get the treatment that they need. University of Maryland Shore Medical Center at Easton, which is here in Talbot County, is a designated primary stroke center. And with that designation, that means that we're able to provide the most evidence-based stroke care and that we have the necessary personnel, infrastructure, expertise, and protocols to rapidly diagnose and treat the patient and then also admit them or transfer them to the appropriate care that they'll need. In 2023, 57% of our patients arrived by an ambulance and 38% of patients arrived within the time window to receive acute stroke treatment. You likely have heard the statement that time is brain. And so, it really is our goal to educate our community on this as much as possible for them to get the treatment that they need and get to the hospital as quick as possible. So, with this proclamation, it really enforces our commitment to that and also the county's commitment to that. So, thank you again for this opportunity and for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Step? Yeah. It's a pleasure to do this for y'all. Just, as you mentioned, there's, everyone knows someone, you know, that's been affected by a stroke. So, you know, what you guys are doing there is absolutely awesome. Please keep up the great work. Keep saving lives, you know, keep helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you for what you are doing and for raising awareness of this. I'm glad that we have, can participate in this occasion to help you on that awareness as well.
It's vital to this community, the services that you rendered. And if you could just tell us who's behind you.
Hi, Danielle Wilson, interim chief nursing officer.
Tia Thompson, regional director of emergency services.
Susan Wazowski, ICU clinical manager.
Thank you for all you do.
And I echo what my colleague said. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. Healthcare is certainly a close piece to my heart. Having, my mother-in-law was a nurse and my daughter is studying to be an RN at Hopkins right now, and so she'll be done in August. So, I know it's, you know, very much hard work, being nurse's doctor within that healthcare system. So, thank you very much for keeping the awareness in front of us and, you know, helping us to look at ways and how to determine if someone is having a stroke. So, thank you.
And I'll say with my colleagues too, it means a lot to me too that you guys are making us aware of that, because that's a little bit on my heart too. My mom passed away in 18 because of stroke. So, and I just had a friend, three months ago, one of my best friends, die from a stroke. So, it means a lot to a lot of people. And what you guys do is miracle stuff. And we really appreciate all that work you do, because it's hard, it's sad, and you have to be there for the families. And I just really appreciate all you're doing for Talbot County, that's for sure. We're one of the first to do this. I'm glad we're the first. And I hope a lot of people follow us, because it means a lot, you know, to older people and younger people too. So, I just appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you. Yep, come on up. We've got something for you.
All right, guys, ready? One, two, three.
This way, left, right, where you want me.
Uh, go that way. Lynn, you too. There you go. All right, ready? One, two, three. There we go. One more, please. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, next up is a certificate of recognition of the Talbot County Department of Correction Officer of the Year. So, that's a big deal, that's for sure. So, Madam Secretary, could you read that into the record, please?
Certificate of Recognition to Lieutenant Tia Slaughter. In recognition of your hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence on behalf of the Talbot County Department of Corrections, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby bestow upon you as a token of the esteem and gratitude of Talbot County, this certificate of recognition in commemoration of your positive contributions to Talbot County and for having been chosen as the Talbot County Department of Corrections Officer of the Year for 2023 on this 14th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay, okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and put that into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, floor is yours.
It pleases me to be here. Teri Gocol is Director of the Department of Corrections in Talbot County. It pleases me to be here every year for many different reasons, but most especially for this evening where we get to recognize our very best employees at the department. And I can tell you that all 50 of them are very best employees, because they are. But Lieutenant Slaughter is somebody very special. She not only runs the entire shift at the facility on the night shift, but she also works as a duly authorized inspector for the Commission on Correctional Standards. She is in the process of becoming a firearms certified instructor to the Police and Correctional Training Commission. And I must say, one of the first females in the state of Maryland. on the correction side to become a certified firearms instructor. She's the top gun every year, the guys just give up. They just automatically let her shoot first, last, or whenever. But every year, she's the top gun. She has many accomplishments during her time in the department. And she just grew up with corrections in her blood. Her grandmother, Ms. Betty, is in the back who worked for me many years in Anarongo County, and continues in Anarongo County. And so Lieutenant Slaughter grew up understanding, realizing corrections, and when she put the application in, was accepted for a position. She's come in and excelled from a detention officer training, running up through the ranks to correctional lieutenant, certified instructor, and has many other accolades to her name. So, I'm very pleased to bring her here tonight, to recognize her. And it's so important when the council recognizes an employee, but specifically for me, for an employee who works for the Department of Corrections, who can bring their family here with great pride, because our job holds a great deal of pride. And we announce it, we yell it out first, but we believe it. And it's really special to me that each of you recognize our employees of the year. And this year is very unique, because we have a correctional officer of the year and we have a correctional employee of the year. Same facility, same four walls, two different roles as they apply. So, in lieu of a full house, I will keep my words short and let Lieutenant Slaughter have a word.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lieutenant Tia Slaughter. I'm just really appreciative of all the opportunities that have been presented to me, and especially for recognition tonight. So, I thank you for everything.
Thank you. Yep. Keisha?
So, I just want to say congratulations on being recognized this evening. And thank you first and foremost for your dedication right here in Talbot County and not Anarongo County. Little bias. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and dedication. So, thank you for all that you do, I know it's hard work, but certainly thank you for that. And once you become certified as that handgun instructor, I know many more doors are going to open up for you, so thank you.
I'll echo that remark, and thank you for all you do.
Repeat, thank you for your leadership and for your service to the county.
This is the best part of our job. It genuinely is just getting to recognize folks, especially those who are, you know, our county employees. Awesome job, keep it up. I just, I love this part, so great job.
And I echo that too, so you keep on out shooting in men, okay? All right, so, okay, you want to come on up, we have something for you.
All right, guys, over here, ready? One, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Okay. Just like Terry was saying, so we're going to go ahead and recognize now with certificate of correctional employee of the year. Okay. Go ahead, Madam Secretary.
Certificate of recognition to Amanda Tonden, Programs Manager, in recognition of your hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence on behalf of the Talbot County Department of Corrections. We, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby bestow upon you as a token of the esteem and gratitude of Talbot County, this certificate of recognition in commemoration of your positive contributions to Talbot County and for having been chosen as the Talbot County Department of Corrections Employee of the Year for 2023 on this 14th day of May 2024.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
Once again, it pleases me to be here with Ms. Tonden. She is Talbot County through and through. Easton High School, parents, part of the community. She's fully embraced by the community, embraces the community. She provides all the program activities that we have for the incarcerated individuals with the Department of Corrections. The education programs, the literacy programs, the reading programs. I see a couple of our colleagues are here from the library. She works, collaborates with the library for a reading program for the female inmates and incarcerated individuals. Ms. Tonden really does it all. She is, was mentored by Captain Green in the back of the room presently, and it's difficult for me to keep them restrained and from going so quick that I can't follow what they're doing. But they are committed 100% to the Department of Corrections. They represent the department in a very professional manner wherever they go, wherever they speak, and they are, they reflect the very, very best emissaries that we can put in the community. And they really represent the Department of Corrections, both Ms. Tonden and Lieutenant Slaughter. But Ms. Tonden runs all the programs. The incarcerated individuals refer to her, after they are discharged, they'll call her and try to get information from her. So she facilitates a very smooth reentry for their transition from the facility to the community. So, great asset to the department, and we're very fortunate to have her as representative of our department.
That's great, yeah.
Hello. I wouldn't be in this position without the support from my coworkers and the mentorship from this administration and the support from my family and my fiance. And I really appreciate everything that the council has done for Corrections this year and look forward to what we can do in the future.
Sounds great, thank you. Mr. Step?
I want to reiterate what I said before, this is just awesome. It's awesome to be able to recognize our employees. It's also awesome just to be able to recognize our community, so, I mean, thank you. I mean, just keep up the great work, thank you.
Thank you for your service, and we know how important what you do is in helping those with reentry, which then helps to keep our recidivism rate down, and it has a real impact on the community, thank you.
And thank you for all you do, and I know it wasn't mentioned, but I hope that you're also involved with addictions counseling for inmates and the programs that AA and NA bring to Corrections. So, thank you for your service.
We have all those in the facility as well.
Thank you for all that you do, your dedication and your leadership, and congratulations on being Employee of the Year. And I know that, you know, Captain Green is a great mentor, and that's what great mentors and leaders do, right? Bring other people up, so, want to thank her and I thank you for this recognition, being dedicated.
Yep, and I was going to say the same thing with the leadership, that's for sure. So, such a great, you're doing such a great job in leadership and, you know, and your parents over here, you know, they got to be proud too. Look at her over there, look at her over there. Can I do something out of the ordinary? Can I ask your dad to put the fish soup back on the menu, please? You know what I mean?
I second, I second.
You know, because it was good, that's for sure. But anyway, now, we're very proud of you, and, you know, keep up the good work. And you're deep into Talbot County, deep into Easton, and we really appreciate you coming out of high school and working right here. We appreciate that, that's for sure, and it means a lot to us. So, come on up, we'll give you your award. Come on, Mom and Dad.
All right, there we go, all right. Ready, one, two, three. Very nice. One more, one, two, oh, wait. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Okay, that's really good stuff, that's for sure. Them guys over there at the Correction Center are doing great, great work. Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion of referral proposal for the cannabis zoning text amendment to the Planning Commission. So, Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and kind of run through that a little bit with us?
Yes, you have before you the proposed final version of the cannabis regulations that we've been working on, which incorporate the relevant provisions from the recent legislation passed by the General Assembly in the 2024 session. I think the only real change from what you had seen previously was adding places of worship to the distance restrictions for dispensaries, which is what was in the new legislation. So procedurally, this needs to be referred to the Planning Commission. They will take a look at it, and then it will come back to the council to introduce a bill and proceed through the process.
Okay, that's good. Okay, any discussion?
No.
Go with counsel?
Nothing further, no, I think we've been through a work session on this. We understand the framework that we're working under, provided by the state.
Okay. Mr. Step?
No comment.
Okay, all right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there, there's a motion second to go ahead and move the proposed text amendment to the Planning Commission to review and for the recommendation? Okay. That's good. Madam Secretary, could you call?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, all right, good. All right, let's move on to introduction of a number resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read this first resolution, please?
A resolution to amend a Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement dated October 14th, 2014 by and between Talbot County, Maryland, the Town of Easton, and Shore Health System, Inc., and recorded among the land records of Talbot County in Library MAS 2206, Folio 206.
Okay. Okay, at this time, it's showing, it's entered, we're introducing, so is there a raise of hands?
So introduced by counsel?
Uh huh. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the number and the public hearing and the time and date, please?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution Number 357. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 11th, at 5:30 PM.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, moving on to requests of motions moved by the table. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, April 9th, the council tabled Resolution Numbers 347 and 348, and the amendments there too. Therefore, we need a motion to remove these items from the table so that the council can now take action upon them.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we need, is there a motion? I need a second. Do I need a second?
Any motion to remove the?
I just need a motion.
347, 348, and the amendments from the table.
Okay.
Who introduced the amendments? I mean, who introduced the resolution?
You mean the motion? You and Mr. Step. Table? Ms. Hayth and Mr. Step introduced.
The initial versions.
Amendment 1 was introduced by Mr. Lusher and Ms. Milkie, and Amendment 2 was introduced by Mr. Lusher and Ms. Milkie. And then for 348, the resolution was introduced by Ms. Hayth and Mr. Step, and Amendment 1 was introduced by council.
Mr. Thomas, can you explain that again, please?
Yes, so the council voted to table all of these.
Table all of them?
On April 9th.
Okay.
So, we need them, you need to make a motion to remove them from the table so you can now act upon them.
Okay.
Or alternate, ultimately, we don't need to, and we can move on to 353. If you want to vote on them.
Okay, so I have to put that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? To take them off the table so we can vote on them? Am I right?
No. Just, you just need?
A motion.
347 and Amendment Number 1 and 2 voted on, and then 48, Amendment Number 1 voted on, removed from the table? Is that what you're asking?
Motion to remove 347 and Amendments 1 and 2 from the table, and then a motion to remove 348 and Amendment 1 from the table.
Okay.
It's not to vote yet.
Okay.
We're not voting on these yet, this is just a procedural.
That's just a removal, okay. Motion to remove, then.
Right.
Okay. Motion to remove, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to go ahead and remove them off the table. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we've done that. So we're going down here to eligible for vote? Is that where we're moving to?
Yes.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record?
Resolution Number 347, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to provide the equivalent dwelling units for all phases of the lakeside development.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and help us with this?
Yes, so I think the first item is the introduction of amendment by Mr. Lusher.
Okay.
So Amendment Number 1 simply removed some unnecessary language. Amendment Number 1 was, along with 347, found consistent by the Planning Commission?
So, just to clarify, so, I was referring to Amendment 3, so, did you want to introduce Amendment 3?
I will, I will, I will introduce Amendment Number 3.
And all Amendment Number 3 does is deletes, it deletes the references to the water and sewer classifications for lakeside and the tables shown in the exhibit to 347. It doesn't, it still provides the phases it need to use, MDE requested, but it's not a subsumum, and then it doesn't change anything, it's just taking out that bit of information.
Takes out information that the MDE did not request of us.
Okay, so, in this 347 right now, this isn't, help me out, this isn't the original.
Well, first, we need, and we're introducing Amendment 3, and then we have to vote on, we have to address each of the amendments.
Okay.
And we'll go through those each in turn.
Okay, so, is there a motion?
So we need to introduce, so?
We need an introduction.
Show hands for introduction on?
For Amendment 3, for Amendment 3.
So I'll introduce Amendment 3.
Okay.
Second.
You got to raise your hand.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, there you go. Okay.
So next, we go to Amendment 1, 347.
Okay.
And Amendment 1 strikes the language, "The phases represented defined land uses only do not represent the timing or sequence of development from the proposed additions to the trap area water system feature planning and trap area sewer system feature planning of the comprehensive water and sewer plan." That was from the language being proposed in 347.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I think you can just call the vote at this point, unless there's any further discussion.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
No.
Amendment 1, just remind me, was introduced?
It was introduced by Mr. Lusher and Ms. Milkie.
Okay, okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. Step?
No.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Nay.
Okay. Amendment Number 2?
So, council may wish to consider withdrawing Amendment Number 2. This amendment simply incorporates the language from 338 into Resolution 347. This amendment simply incorporates the language from 338 into Resolution 347, which is now redundant since the council has adopted Resolution 338.
I'll withdraw sponsorship of Amendment 2.
And Mr. Lesher and Ms. Milkie both introduced 330, or the Amendment 2.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that?
No, sponsorship is withdrawn.
Okay.
It's off the table.
Yeah, okay.
And next, we have a vote on Amendment 3.
Okay.
And again, this amendment simply removes the water and sewer designations so that all that this would then address is exactly what MDE requested of us, which is the EDUs for each phase of lakeside.
And I think also, I think it's consistent with the chart on the permit, which had two columns.
Correct.
It didn't have the column as to what the water and sewer designations were.
That's true. That's true, so it would more closely conform with the MDE permit.
So is this, bear with me now, this is a new amendment?
It's a new amendment, but it is not a substantive change. We're not changing any classifications, just taking out that reference in the tables, which is something MDE didn't ask us to provide.
And this didn't have to go, okay, so it.
It doesn't need to go to the Planning Commission.
Okay, I got you.
It's not a substantive change at all.
Okay, and we're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
So now, you have Resolution 347 as amended by Amendment 3, eligible for vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Hayth?
Oh, Lord. Hold on.
Yeah, no problem.
Which resolution did we just vote on? 348?
347.
Amendment 3, though, right?
Amendment 3, which deletes the references to the water and sewer classifications that were shown in the.
But we just did that, we're doing it again?
Well, you amended, you voted to amend 347.
Oh, okay.
Now you have to vote on 347 as amended.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, straight?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm up to bat?
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, yes.
Okay, it's all the same thing. It's close, but it's all right, it's all right.
I'll need a drink, and I don't even drink.
It's all right, it's all right. All right, so we want to move on to the next one, we'll move on to 348.
Yes, so Amendment 1 to Resolution 348, the council, again, may wish to, this was introduced by council, the council may wish to consider withdrawing Amendment Number 1. The Planning Commission did not find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. All that amendment did was provide further clarity and context for the W2 S2 parcels.
Okay.
So, it doesn't, it isn't necessary for 348.
So, do we have a motion to?
I will withdraw my sponsorship of it.
Okay.
That was introduced by entire council.
So all five of us.
All five of us, okay, yep.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
And then we need a vote on 348 as introduced.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve 348 as introduced by Mr. Step and myself.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, to go ahead and vote on 348 as amended. Madam Secretary, could you?
No, as presented.
As presented, sorry.
Yeah.
I just want to see if you pay attention, that's all.
I am now.
Okay. Madam Secretary?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, all right, next on the agenda is Resolution 353. Madam Secretary?
So I have an amendment to offer, since 347 passed and 338 passed, there's a lot of redundant language in here. We can take all that redundant language out, which is offered in Amendment 1, and that simplifies 353 considerably.
So, does that mean we're withdrawing? This one that we're getting ready to do, is that what that means?
That would simply, this would introduce a.
But we got one on the floor here now.
Right.
So we got a.
We've already asked.
You have an amendment to 353, which deletes the references to Resolutions 338 and 347, which have now been adopted, so the references in 353 are removed.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on it, then? On what this next in line is, so. Right.
It is eligible for a vote.
With the new amendment?
Well, we would act on the amendment first.
You have to address the amendment.
That's kind of where I was headed, yeah, okay, yeah, okay. All right, we got to address that, so Madam Secretary, could you, is that what we got to do? You're right. Read that into the record? All right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, we don't.
Won't you read the resolution?
Show of hands for introduction of Amendment 1 to Resolution 353.
I got you, yeah, okay, all right, a show of hands of 353 amendment.
This takes out all that redundant language.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Introduced by Lesher and Milkie.
Yeah.
Then you need to vote on Amendment 1.
No, we need to vote on Amendment 1. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. Step?
No.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Nay.
Okay, got that one now. Let's go to Resolution 354.
350, now you have to vote on 353.
Okay, we got to vote on.
So the amendment was voted down, and now you have 353 as introduced for vote.
Okay.
You want me to read it into the record? Resolution Number 353, resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, the CWSP 1, to clarify and confirm the water and sewer classifications of certain parcels incorrectly shown in Exbits A and B, to Resolution Number 281 as amended, 2, to reclassify and remap the water and sewer classifications of Tax Map 55, Parcel 83, Lot 1, Tax Map 59, Parcel 4, and portions of Tax Map 55, Parcel 17 and 65, as W3 S3; 3, to provide the equivalent dwelling units for all phases of the lakeside development; 4, for consistency with Maryland Department of the Environment Discharge Permit Number 19 DP 3460; and 5, to require that any future expansion of the Lakeside Waste Water Treatment Plant shall require an amendment to the CWSP.
Okay.
Well, there certainly is, without the amendment, there's redundant material in here.
Okay.
That's already been accomplished through the other resolutions.
And one new element, which is to remap and reclassify the lower section as W3 S3.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Callahan?
No.
Mr. Step?
No.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
No.
Okay. So are we ready for 354 now? Okay.
I'm Ray Clark, county engineer. Just as a reminder, I guess, for you, as well as the general public, the Public Supervisory Board provided the recommendation and a motion to recommend that the county council adopt 354 via a 5 to 0 vote, so just wanted to know that.
Good evening, counsel. Brennan Tolton, Planning Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. At the May 1, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, they considered and reviewed Resolution 354. A motion was made and seconded that Resolution 354 was consistent with the Talbot County Comprehensive Plan and the seven relevant standards in accordance with the Environmental Article of the Maryland Annotated Code. This motion passed via 4 to 0 vote, with one member of the Planning Commission being absent.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, any other questions?
And, Mr. Tolton, all of the subject properties are currently developed and on septics?
With the exception of, I believe, one of the properties on, the subject property on Blueberry Acres, if I'm not mistaken.
There is one vacant parcel.
A vacant parcel, which would now get?
Sewer, it would be reclassified for sewer service for that unimproved parcel.
And they only get one connection?
Correct, one, it's a 180 year connection.
They only get one connection.
Yeah.
Have we done this before? Have we provided water and sewer service to an undeveloped parcel?
Yes, we have done that, yes, sir. Case in point, would be Resolution 230, I'm sorry, 235, we provided sewer, or we reclassified vacant lots under that resolution, and ultimately, we are working to have sewer provided to those lots. They would not be eligible for any Bay Restoration Funds, but there would be sewer service that would be extended to those vacant, unimproved lots. And the same also happened with Resolution 250, we had vacant lots under Resolution 250 as well.
But the, I'm sorry, what was that last part?
Resolution 250, which was the sewer extension to Bosman and Nevet, we also had unimproved lots or vacant lots incorporated in the sewer service area for that resolution as well.
With guidelines about when those would be undeveloped lots would be eligible?
They're eligible when sewer is provided, or sewer is available to that property. They would not be allowed to have any Bay Restoration Funds. The Maryland Department of the Environment will not provide Bay Restoration Funds to an unimproved parcel.
Okay, any other questions?
One final one for me, if I don't mind, so just, Ray, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Being this is an undeveloped property, if the property owner wished, they could put in a septic if they wished, or they have the, so this basically gives them the availability to connect into the system if that lot has ever developed?
Right now, by being classified as S1 area, they would no longer be eligible to put in a septic system. I would also note that this area typically has high groundwater with very poor drainage soils, so the likelihood is, is that they would not be able to even get a perk to even do a septic system.
Got you, thank you.
I just have one question, so.
Yeah, sure.
Any reason why it was moved directly to S1, immediate priority status?
That puts them in a position primarily for the county to extend sewer for all the four lots, and then we're putting a valve that would be provided to that lot for a future connection, so it would be part of our effort to put all of the valves in at this point in time, rather than to put it in at a later date.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
None. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Hayth?
I need more time.
Wait a minute, excuse me, I'm sorry, yes, yes. Aye, sorry, just thinking of something else.
It's okay, you're back on board now.
I need more time to review the documents before I can make a vote.
So you want to hold off on this vote, then, so you can get it comfortable?
If I could.
In the recommendation of?
I mean, you have a majority, but I just, yeah. Need more time.
You can abstain.
Okay, I'll abstain from the vote.
Okay, that's good. There we go, good. There we go, okay, good.
That won't hold anything.
There you go. All right, next on the list is 355.
Again, counsel, the Public Supervisory Board recommended that the county council adopt Resolution 355, and I apologize, I told you five members, we actually had only four members on the board at that time.
Okay.
So before, it was a 4 to 0 vote for that motion, recommending the county council adopt Resolution 355. I do should note that the property owner has identified that parcel, or Tax Map 40, Parcel 40, which is unimproved, she's willing to have that removed from the resolution, and only move forward with the improved lot, she has no intentions on developing that parcel.
Okay.
Yeah, so this requires amendment now.
And the Planning Commission reviewed this at their May 1, 2024 meeting, and a motion was made and seconded that Resolution 355 is consistent with the 2016 Talbot Comprehensive Plan, and the seven relevant standards in accordance with the Environmental Article of the Maryland Annotated Code, with the condition that Tax Map 40, Parcel 40 be struck from the resolution and the request.
So I'll offer an amendment that we strike references to Parcel 40 from this resolution, from Resolution 355.
Second? Does he need a second?
Yeah. Yeah.
See, a motion to amend and a second, so we need a vote.
Yeah, we got a question, you called the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we need a vote on the resolution.
I need to read it, I need to read the title.
Okay, yep.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real properties located at 6362 Bellevue Road, Royal Oak, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 40 as Parcel 67, and the adjoining lot shown on Tax Map 40 as Parcel 40, respectively, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status.
Well, this is, with this removed, it simply provides that sewer eligibility for a single parcel that is already developed, that is currently on septic, there is already a sewer line running past this down to Bellevue. It seems that this connection won't create any new development in that corridor, the development already exists, and by removing a septic, it should have a positive benefit on water quality.
Mm hmm. Was there a second?
No, we don't, just eligible for vote, you can simply call the roll once the discussion's done.
Madam Secretary, could you call the vote? As amended.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, next on the list is 356.
Resolution Number 356, a resolution to formally decline to accept the offer of dedication for the Paper Street portion of Coward Avenue, as shown a subdivision plot entitled Map of Rio Vista Development, dated February 1954, recorded among the land records of Talbot County, Maryland, at Plat Book JTB 8, Folio 11, and to authorize the execution of a quit claim deed to convey a 4,195 square foot portion of the Paper Street adjacent to 226 Tyler Avenue, St. Michaels, Maryland, to the owners of such property, Dr. Grayson R. Bowers and Teresa M. Bowers, for no monetary consideration.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. The resolution, I'd ask that Mr. Patrick explain this, because there's language in here that says authorize execution of a quit claim deed to convey this parcel, and the quit claim deed being executed by us to convey it, but we're not conveying it. It's not what a quit claim deed, now, my understanding of what a quit claim deed is, or what the deed for this parcel is, or what the deed for this parcel is intended to do, that there is, I didn't do a title search, but there is information in the record that the county really may, maybe does not actually have title. All we're saying, I think, is that we've got no interest in it.
That's correct, so the plat that's referenced in the title depicts several streets and roadways that were offered to be dedicated to public use, this one in particular, this portion of Calvert Avenue, was never accepted by the county, it's, the county's confirmed it has no intention of accepting it, so the resolution rejects that offer of dedication, but it also gives from the county a quitclaim deed for the 4,195 square foot portion abutting the rear of the Bowers' property, and all, the county doesn't claim to hold any title to that property, the, I've advised their council who's here this evening and confirmed the county doesn't believe they own it, so the quitclaim deed is just saying, we're giving you whatever we have in it, which is to say we don't believe we have anything in it, and it doesn't resolve their, it doesn't give them clear title, they still need to address those issues, and I believe they understand.
And there would be other issues they need to address in order to take title to that parcel. Just wanted to clear that for the record.
With this one, I'm just concerned about a question of fairness, about doing this for one resident adjacent to this Paper Street and without having worked out a process to do it for all, and I would rather see us work through that, perhaps give this some time to move this to the table, figure out a way of perhaps amending this so that it can be done equitably for all the neighbors along this Paper Street.
Yeah, I understand, I don't know how we can go about that process when we don't own it.
When we don't own it, plus there's, you know, these are one-off, these are one-off requests by individual property owners, but again, it's like saying we don't own it, we're just taking our stake out of the, out of the equation.
Right.
Well, this is really only one step in a process that they need to even acquire it.
Right.
So all we're saying is, you know, we don't have an interest in this particular parcel.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Property owner's counsel, Mr. Cooper Smith, could I ask you a question if you don't mind? I just basically want to know, is the way we're discussing it up here, is that the understanding of both you and your client that you do understand that, you know, we're just releasing our, you know, our stake in the game, basically?
We don't have a stake.
That's right, that's my understanding, is the quitclaim deed just offers whatever interest, if any interest, the county may have. I could give you a quitclaim deed to the Empire State Building, it's whatever interest I have in it, which is none, so.
Just for public record for both you and your client, but also for others who may be in this situation, that they understand what we're doing.
Yeah, understood.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, you want to say anything else, or?
I don't have anything further to add, although I will say that my understanding is that the HOA had expressed to council that they were agreeable to the waiver of the offer dedication, and that they have a process going forward for addressing these.
Okay, okay.
Does the HOA have any standing, though? Isn't it the individual homeowners that do with regard to these streets?
Well, we haven't done a title search on the, and that's, again, that's not, the county doesn't own it, so.
Yeah, right.
But they choose to.
We don't have a dog in this hunt.
This just takes us out of it.
Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Looks like right now we're at play stuff.
Okay, thank you, Council. Under County Manager Report this evening, I have a number of items, the first are board and committee appointments, asking Council's consideration for the appointment of Dr. Lisa Stone to serve on the Emergency Services Advisory Board as a member-at-large.
Okay. I'll move the appointment of Lisa Stone.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to appoint Mrs. Stone. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And Council requesting in consideration for the appointment of Mr. William Belding to represent the Oxford District on the Police Accountability Board. You have interviewed Mr. Belding, and he has, he is willing to serve on that board.
So moved, okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
That completes your committee, board and committee appointments for this evening. The first request I have is from Brian Lucates, who was not able to join us this evening, the Department of Emergency Services requesting approval to enter into a 12-month lease for property at 29528 Canvas Back Drive in Easton, Maryland, at a cost of $111,240 to take effect in mid-June of 2024. This is a storage facility to replace the storage that they currently use at the Talbot County Business Center, which, as you know, is getting ready to go away. So this was included in the budget for next year, and we're asking Council's permission to enter the lease.
I'll move to approve the lease agreement as outlined by staff.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to enter the lease for emergency services. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. I asked Dana Newman to come up from the Talbot County Free Library, Talbot County Free Library is requesting a letter of intent to the Maryland State Library Agency noting that the county intends to provide a total of $3,795,000 over FY '25 and '26 for the St. Michael's Library Expansion and Renovation Project, and Dana is here to add any additional information or answer any questions of Council. Welcome.
All right, so our estimate went up between the time we filed for the fiscal year 25 grant, which was back in May of 2023, and then there was a new estimate issued, I think, October or November of 2023, and that's what we based our fiscal year, fiscal year 25 request on. So that went up, the 3.7 million that the county has an intent to fund and hopefully will fund when they strike the budget on the 28th, we're not asking for any more additional funding. In fact, what we're planning on doing with this letter of intent to fund is to apply for a fiscal year 26 grant because the project will go into fiscal year 26 by about three or four months if we stay on track, which means that we are eligible to apply through the Library Capital Grant Program for additional funds that the county is having to pay because the estimate did go up. So we're able to apply for about $225,000, which would actually, if we get this, and it's a competitive grant, so I don't know that we will, it would actually knock down that 3.7 million dollars by 225,000 roughly. So that's what we're asking for, is an intent, we have to show what your matching funding, additional matching funding is, and so we were asked by the committee to actually demonstrate what the rest of the funding that the county is committing, so that's that 3.7 that is already in the capital improvement plan. So again, we're not asking for additional funding at this point, we're actually just asking for support so we can put in this grant, and that would actually lower the amount that the county would have to fund, which, you know, I did say I would look for every dollar I could, so that's what I'm doing.
Okay. I think we need to thank you for looking for those opportunities to find that, we know that construction costs are going up, this is not the first time this evening we're talking about rising construction costs, they're much more modest on this end, and you're bringing forth some potential funding to the table for filling that gap, so thank you very much, and if there's no other discussion, I'll move approval of the letter of intent.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and do a letter of intent for the library. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, Dana.
And thank you, we appreciate your support, thank you.
Yep, appreciate you guys.
Now, your Council, I'll ask Heather Grant, if you're in the audience, to come forward. Is Heather Grant with us this evening? Oh, thank you, great. So the town of Oxford is seeking a letter of support for their application in partnership with Talbot Thrive for a shared-use recreational trail to connect two parks in the town of Oxford with the adjacent county-owned Oxford Conservation Park. The Council previously provided a letter of support for the feasibility study and initial design, the Council would be approving the primary path identified on the unimproved parcel with a willingness to participate in any further discovery regarding any alternate routes, and Heather is here this evening to speak on this project, welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers, thank you for your attention to this, I know it was on a very short schedule. My name is Heather Grant, I'm the Executive Director of Talbot Thrive. We're here asking for a letter of support for this grant quest to MDOT for funding of this Oxford Parks Connector project. The project is a shared-use recreational trail that will connect two parks in the town of Oxford with the adjacent county-owned Conservation Park. It is in the design phase as we speak, and the hope is to request state funding for construction at the state level. The grant application is actually due tomorrow, so I appreciate your attention to this. This project will create a trail that will improve access to the Conservation Park from the town of Oxford, creating safer and easier pedestrian access for people of all ages and abilities. As the owner of the unimproved park parcel that lies between the town limits and the Oxford Conservation Park, we request that the Council provide a letter of support at this time. We will be holding public meetings and comment on the design in June and July in anticipation of design completion by late August.
Thank you for your work to secure this funding and to make this modest connection through the town of Oxford. I hope that you have your sights set on bigger rail trail connections within the county.
Yes, we do.
And look forward to supporting you on those. In related news, we, I heard today at Eastern Shore Land Conservancy Sustainable Growth Conference that the state's feasibility study for the Frederick Douglass Trail from Easton all the way up to Taco State Park has been completed, and so we can look forward to progress on that future rail trail route as well, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll move.
One quick question, will this help get the kids from Oxford Kids Camp in the summer? Will this help get them off Oxford Road?
Yes, well, that's one of the goals of the grant.
Okay, thank you. My kids were, they were part of riding their bikes down Oxford Road during the day, and it just worried the hell out of me, so, thank you. Please encourage them to use this and get the kids off the road.
They will, thank you.
Thank you.
We've been riding our bikes on Oxford Road for years.
I know, but.
Traffic hasn't been the same.
I know. That's true. But glad to have you, Heather.
Thank you.
Saw the announcement in the Talbot Spie when you came on board with Talbot Thrive, but haven't had the opportunity to formally meet you here, so glad you're here this evening.
Thank you for having me.
All right, Mr. Lusher, did you make a motion?
I was about to. I will move approval of the letter of intent.
Second.
Letter of support.
Okay, we've got a motion second for a letter of support for the new rails to trails in Oxford, so to speak, and I'm really glad that that's happening, because I wanted that to happen a while ago, that's for sure, when we did the park, so anyway, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Sounds great, thanks, Heather, I appreciate it, appreciate you staying here tonight.
And Council, next item of business, I'll call Mary Kay Verteri up if you're here, thank you, Mary Kay. The county has received a letter of interest for All Seasons to partner with the county on the FY '25 Community Development Block Grant Application, and I'll turn it over to Mary Kay to discuss this project. Mary Kay, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you very much for having me here this evening. In April, we posted on our county grant webpage, as well as forwarded an email to all of our local nonprofits, seeking letters of interest for the fiscal year 25 Community Development Block Grant Funding Cycle. We received four letters. Upon reviewing these letters with our local representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, we found that one project was ineligible because it was already under construction, and two other proposed projects were found to be a much better match for the FY '25 Special Project category through DHCD, so we're going to work with those applicants and DHCD to determine the potential to apply through that program. And the fourth letter, as noted, was a letter of interest to partner with Talbot County in FY '25 CDBG funding round from For All Seasons. They are seeking $750,000 to provide capital improvements to their facility located at 300 Talbot Street in Easton. The improvements will expand the capacity to support low to moderate income residents in Talbot County by providing a safe, secure, and respectful environment. Key upgrades include HVAC upgrades, renovation of five bathrooms, replacement of emergency doors and locks, insulation of insulation, interior refurbishments, server room enhancements, and space reconfigurations. So we're seeking the Council's partnership with For All Seasons to submit an application to DHCD for the competitive FY '25 funding round, and if selected, the Council would need to hold a public hearing on the project, which would potentially be on May 28, and we will work to complete the formal application, which is due to DHCD by June 11. We do have representatives from For All Seasons, Beth Ann Dorman, the president, and Lauren Weber, the vice president, who are here this evening if you have additional questions about the project.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Just thrilled to see For All Seasons taking advantage of this opportunity and this investment in the community.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve this request by For All Seasons to apply for CDBG funding.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and do a letter for block grant. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Mary Kay, and just a shout out for Mary Kay, we thank you for being with us. Mary Kay, as you know, is very good at dotting i's and crossing t's, and she seems to be having fun helping us with the grant efforts, so thank you, Mary Kay.
It's a terrific opportunity, and I appreciate it, and thank you very much for helping our local nonprofits.
Great, thanks.
The final request I have, Council, is the finance director, you have a memo from Martha Sparks, your finance director, your packet, this is regarding a request that she has of Council to approve to extend the county's agreement with SB and Company for financial auditing services for FY '24 in the amount of $49,000 and $50,500 in FY '25. It's a two-year extension to an existing contract. We'd ask Council's consideration for approval of her request.
I'll move the extension.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to extend it. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And Council, that concludes your County Manager Report for this evening, thank you for your support as usual.
Okay, thank you, good job. All right, we've got that taken care of. Do we have?
Nobody signed up this evening.
Nobody signed up, okay, let's go, it's public comment, anybody like to come on up and have any comments? Okay, yeah, yeah. Good evening.
My name is Dan Watson, I live at 8404 Avaley Manor Lane, Easton. As the acting chairman of the Talbot Integrity Project, I come forward tonight simply to say out loud and on the record that what the vast majority of Talbot County citizens know and fully understand, what three members of the County Council did here tonight in adopting. what three members of the county council did here tonight in adopting Resolution three forty-eight was simply shameful. After all that was learned over three years, the council took no action that will really impede the developers' actions in this latest. It readopts the exact sewer service, sewer service map that was sought by the developer at the outset. We all know that Lakeside was approved in two thousand twenty based entirely on lies and misrepresentations hidden behind a smokescreen of falsehood. Tonight's action was worse because you know the truth and acted in spite of it. The Talbot Integrity Project's mission was to overcome the corruption of our land use approval processes and restore the integrity to the review and decision-making practices affecting development. I regret to say that in that mission, we have failed.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up to a few words? Okay. Counsel comments. Mr. Step?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, I guess we say we, looking at the clock here, it looks like polls are open for another thirty-five minutes. For anyone watching who hasn't gotten out to, to do their civic duty and vote today during primary election, so you have thirty-five more minutes to get to your local polling place.
Yep.
And then also, I just wanted to announce that I've submitted a request for legislation to, to appear on the, on the, on the November ballot in the general election to continue our one-cent, our one-cent tax increase, which our county overwhelmingly supported back in two thousand twenty for an additional five years beneficiaries would be our Sheriff's Department, our Department of Emergency Services, as well as our Department of Corrections. So look for that to be discussed. Keep me honest here, Patrick, on the twenty-eighth, right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for doing, for, for getting that going, and looking forward to, to bringing that to, to council for vote. Okay?
Mr. Lusher?
Two announcements. First, I'm looking forward to our upcoming tour of two CDBG projects. On Friday, we'll be joining some of our partners to look at two recently completed projects in our community as a result of Community Development Block Grant. We all know now what that acronym stands for. The program is federally funded but administered by the state and distributed locally to fund community projects, such as we heard this evening. Two community projects we'll be, we will be touring on Friday are the Family Support Center by Early Head Start and the new Commercial Kitchen and Community Space at the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center. A lot of people are involved in making these projects a success, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone who helps with this grant program, including Mary Kay Vertery, who was here tonight, that came out of her retirement to serve as our grants administrator and who puts lots of hours in to make sure our projects are vetted in compliance with grant requirements and on target for completion. We look forward to celebrating these two projects on Friday. If the community is interested in learning more about the CDBG grant, they can visit talbotcountymd.gov/grants. And second, we have to look forward to the sounds of an old-fashioned-town crier at the Talbot County Courthouse on Friday, May twenty-fourth, as the community takes a step back in time to celebrate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Talbot Resolves. This was a proclamation made in front of the courthouse on May twenty-fourth, seventeen seventy-four, by several citizens. The patriots declared that they would act as friends to liberty and to the general interests, interests of mankind in support of their brethren in Boston, Massachusetts. Great Britain was preparing to shut down the port of Boston in response to the Boston Tea Party that occurred that previous December sixteen, seventeen seventy-three. Right here on our courthouse lawn, you will find a historical marker that memorializes the effort of those patriots almost two-hundred-and-fifty years ago. On Friday, May twenty-fourth, beginning at twelve noon, the Talbot Historical Society, Talbot County Government, and the Department of Economic Development and Tourism, and the Colonel Tench Tillman chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution will commemorate and celebrate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Talbot Resolves. The free public event kicks off at noon, rain or shine. This is a milestone event that marks the beginning of our two-year commemoration of our nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, coming, coming up on July fourth, two thousand twenty-six. We look forward to engaging the public on how Talbot County should celebrate this special occasion. More information on how to get involved will become available at our webs, on our website at talbotcountymd.gov.
Thank you, Mr. Lusher.
I have two comments. One is, I do regret that this council did not take action to correct the mistakes of a prior council with respect to the Lakeside development and the mapping. I think we had an opportunity to correct what, in a positive way, could be called a mistake as opposed to a misrepresentation, so I regret that. On a more positive note, I do want to encourage our senior citizens to attend the Senior Fair. It's going to be a great event and a real benefit to our senior community. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I know one thing that we always hear or have heard probably about two years ago during election season was, is there understanding of the comprehensive plan? And is there a understanding of the responsibility of the Planning Commission and the law within the state of Maryland? And for that, yes, this council does understand the comprehensive plan and the Planning Commission and their role. And so I'm thankful to the Planning Commission because without their consistency with the comp plan, we would not have been able to take action on three forty-seven, three forty-eight, or three thirty-eight. So with that, I want to thank the Planning Commission for stating that there was consistency with three thirty-eight, three forty-seven, and three forty-eight, and thank my colleagues for their vote and for making this happen for this project because it has been a year and a half, and now we're able to satisfy the request for, from MDE. So I am proud of that, and I truly do thank the Planning Commission for their consistency.
That sounds great, and I'll do the same. I want to thank the Planning Commission, and as far as this council, we've, we've done a great job, and I did, I don't think we did make a mistake. I think we made the right choice. And by saying that, I'm a positive about it, and let's all move on and let TRAP do what TRAP needs to do and provide homes, and, and a great life in TRAP. Let's do that.
Mr. Lusher? Let's move on.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, beginning at six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at four-thirty PM and then adjourning into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The council will hold a work session on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, that same day, at three o'clock PM to discuss the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement for the future hospital here in the Bradley Meeting Room. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
All right, thank you.